Okay, let's commence the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 21st at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
This has been posted at Hometown Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly in Milton City Hall.
Thank you, and I will note that it is now Hometown Ace Hardware, locally owned by a woman, and congratulations, right? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries and we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So I will go to you, Inga, to check in if there's public comments on any item or if there's public comments on an item that will appear later in the agenda.
So just to confirm, there is no one currently in the waiting room. Steve and Rich, they're here for the school district, but we can maybe wait until we get to the Central Park Agenda item. And then Mike Jonas, I don't know if you'd like to speak during public comment?
And Mike is here for Sissy Lala's Bushwood Country Club application, too.
Perfect, so maybe he can answer some questions when that agenda item comes up.
It sounds good. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. That motion's carried. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of the city treasurer.
So, we are at the stage now where Kelsey has signed her conditional offer of employment to start working with the City of Milton as our new city treasurer. Kelsey's here with us tonight. So pending the council's approval, Kelsey will be joining us on October 11th, and we are certainly very excited to have her join us as we start the budget process. Her skills will be invaluable, but don't worry, we've been working on it already, so. So attached to the agenda tonight is the conditional offer of employment which Kelsey has signed, so. Other than that, it's all over but the shouting.
Is there a little small print in that offer that says she has to do team building with us?
Yes.
There is, okay, perfect, all right.
And treats?
And dress up, I don't know, what else, what else?
Jenny hasn't, Jenny hasn't laid on her all of the requirements for Halloween birthdays, Christmas, all those.
Not yet, not yet, we want, we want an appointment first.
Yeah.
I want to make it official, so she can't go backwards.
All right, any questions or comments or a motion from the council?
I would move approval.
Oh, we have Mark raising his hand already, this is an early appearance from our city attorney.
Yes. Well, the ordinance calls for the mayor to appoint subject to approval of the common council, so I presume the first step would be for the mayor to formally appoint Kelsey as treasurer for the city and then a motion to approve her appointment and the, the contract of employment.
All right. I appoint Kelsey, I, Kelsey, can you tell me how to pronounce your last name so I don't mess it up?
It's Bannock.
Kelsey Bannock to the position of treasurer for the City of Milton, Wisconsin.
And I would move approval of the appointment and the conditional offer that was presented.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Kelsey, congratulations, City of Milton.
Thank you.
Welcome to Milton.
Thank you, I'm excited to join the Milton team.
Yes, you are. And we're excited to have you, so thanks. All right, that was, that was one of the probably more fun things we're gonna do tonight. Discussion and possible action on Sissy Lala's Doing Business as Bushwood Country Club application for a Class B retail license for fermented malt beverage and a Class B retail license intoxicating liquor.
Okay, so Mike Jonas of Sissy Lala and is going to be doing business as Bushwood Country Club has applied for a Class B retail license, it's a fermenting malt beverage and a Class B retail license intoxicating liquor for 229 North Jamesville Street. This property was previously licensed as Susie Hughes Bar and Grill. Mike has been managing Susie Hughes and will be taking it over and beginning a five-year term lease with the owner if the liquor license is approved tonight. And staff has completed the background checks on Mike Jonas, who's the owner of the business and will be the liquor agent. And then also Director Robinson has completed his inspection of the property. If the approval goes through tonight, Susie Hughes, who their license is going to Hay Adams, that's the official name, and they have indicated that they will be surrendering their license. If they do surrender their license, then it will be a regular license that will be issued. If not, then a reserve license with a $10,000 fee would be issued at that point. And Susie Hughes, Hay Adams, would be able to continue their license if they choose another premise. And then Mike also is here with us, if there's any questions for him.
Okay. Brian, any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Linda?
Not at this time.
Larry?
It's related, but not. One of the questions I have is regardless of what happens over there, the garbage units were supposed to be enclosed and they never were. So regardless of what happens, it'd be nice if they were. It's a business and the dumpsters are out the open. And I believe under our ordinance they are to be enclosed, so.
Okay, so that might be something, I cannot believe that Mark didn't interrupt, but it's a little bit off topic of the liquor license, but I appreciate you letting.
Right, it's just a side comment, I don't have anything related to the license right now.
Okay, thanks. Bill?
No comment this time.
Teresa?
Not at this time, no.
Devin?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move approval.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, anything else for anyone?
I want to make sure I understand clearly.
Okay.
Because there was two contingencies, as I heard it, tied into that. Correct, Jenny? They have options, maybe contingencies isn't the correct or options. Meaning it could be a regular license, it could be a reserve license.
Yep, so.
Don't we need, I'm sorry.
We can't issue the license or the approval can't be based off of if someone else is going to be surrendering their license. So Susie Hughes, Hay Adams, has indicated they are planning to surrender that license and once it's surrendered, then a regular license will be available and that is what will be issued to Sissy Lala. However, if they don't, because it is not required, then all that we have available is a reserve license, which is a $10,000 fee.
Gotcha, but then our reserve licenses are gone.
Yes, that is correct, yes, that is correct. And so then Hay Adams would have, our ordinance has 90 days before they start the revocation process because they could find another promise at that point. And again, at this point, I talked to Susan Adams and she is not interested in continuing with that liquor license, so she is planning to do it, but again, it's not a guarantee.
Well, that's why I wanted the clarification, thank you.
Yep. Anything else for anyone? Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible, discussion direction and possible action regarding the transfer of Central Park to the school district of Milton.
So some folks who were on the council back in 2018 may remember that the school district had approached the City of Milton at that time about the gauging the city's interest in potentially conveying Central Park to the school district as at that time they had some pretty big plans to expand their outdoor recreational facilities. That, for a variety of reasons, that, that discussion never materialized to the point where the council or the school board made any kind of affirmative decision. That discussion was tabled up until recently when the school district reached out again and under the, under the kind of condition that they would like to improve the tennis courts, which they currently lease the, the ground that the tennis courts sit on from the school district, kind of into perpetuity for, for no fee. They would like to make those improvements to the, the tennis court, but want to revisit the discussion as well about conveying the park over to the school district. As you may recall, back in 2018, those conversations kind of centered around the, the concept of treating Central Park, if conveyed, to the school district, similar to Schilberg Park, still a public park open to the public, public is able to utilize those facilities, would be able to rent the pavilion, things of that nature, those conditions still apply under this most recent request. So the school board, I did discuss the concept conceptually last week and was, I think, I don't want to put words in either Rich or Steve's mouth, but kind of directed staff to continue to pursue discussions with the City of Milton about our interest in potentially conveying that facility, that park and its facilities to the school district. So that's where we are at, at this point, we're still at the kind of the discussion and direction phase. This did go before Parks and Recreation last night, they reviewed it back in 2018 as well and reviewed it again last night and had some of the same questions that some of the council members have had about, you know, will it still be open to the public, will the public still be, be able to access the playground and the ball fields? Will the softball association still be able to utilize that, that field? Will the pavilion still be open to the public? And I believe the answer to all those questions is yes. But we can certainly turn it over to Steve or Rich. And the, and similar to 2018, the Parks and Recreation recommended that in, in consideration for conveyance of the park, that the school district would be willing to pave the existing gravel parking lot at King Park as they believe that it would be a benefit not only to the City of Milton residents, but also to the school district as overflow parking for football games and the tennis matches and whatnot. But that direction would need to be given by the city council in order to make that as part of the kind of the negotiations, for lack of a better term. I know our attorney Schrader has been in conversations with the school district's attorney, attorney Fahy, about the means of conveyance, but those conversations have just been kind of at the 30,000 foot level awaiting direction from the council, which is what we're looking for tonight. I think the questions at hand are, is there an interest in the city council to convey the park to the school district of Milton? And if so, are there any conditions or stipulations that they would put on that conveyance? And I think that covers all the items. Stephen, did I misspeak in any, any step of the process?
No, no, thank you, that was a very accurate representation of conversations that we've had between the school district and the city to date. The plan for improvements largely remains the same as we had originally planned back in 2018, 19, which involved obviously replacing the tennis courts, pretty much in the exact footprint as they sit today. Also replacing the parking lot at Central Park and also, you know, relocating a couple of field events for track and field that have been displaced now with our recent, recently completed referendum construction, but largely plans remain the same, Al summarized it great, we don't plan on changing, you know, the public's use of the pavilion. I actually wear two hats in this, I'm actually the vice president of the softball association, too. And, you know, we would still allow the Milton Softball Association to continue to do what they've done at that park for years and years, so largely it would be, you know, an unnoticed change to the average community citizen.
Thanks, Stephen.
Anybody else from the school district have anything they wanted to add before I move on to the council?
Yeah, this is, this is Rich and, and I can just also share that from our discussion with the school board at our previous meeting. Although the school board didn't take any action, they, we let them know that, that as long as the city was in favor of continuing the discussion, that we would continue the discussion with, with folks from the city. One thing that I do want to share is that the, the repairs that we're looking to do to the tennis courts are pretty extensive, they're, the tennis courts, we've, we've done annual upkeep as far as filling cracks and, and keeping it playable, but those continue to be bigger and bigger needs every year. And if we were able to transfer the, the, the property from the city to the school district, we'd be looking at taking on a complete revamping of the tennis courts. At, I think Stephen, maybe Stephen, you can correct me, but I think between the tennis courts and the parking lot, we were looking at about $400,000 worth of, worth of repairs and, and maintenance to the park. I want to just reinforce what, what, what Stephen had said about our, our intent is that we would, it would be treated very similar to Schilberg Park, which is another community park that's, that's owned by the, by the school district. If we did, if the school district did own Central Park, it would allow us to levy for those repairs to the tennis courts. There'd be some question about whether we'd be able to levy for those repairs if we aren't the owners of the park, so we would have to revisit what our long-term plans would be with that, depending on what we're allowed to levy through our fund 80, which is our community services fund. And it'd be, certainly be open to any questions that any members of the, of the common council have.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, Devin, do you have any questions or comments?
None at this time, no.
Teresa?
No.
Bill?
Just for clarification, the city then would not own any property on the, I guess it would be northwest corner of Hilltop and Municipal, that, that's the, if, if we do this, that entire section is connected to the school district's property and there would be no city property there. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's what had the discussions have been up to this point, the park actually sits on a, on a separate parcel that's owned by the city and, and at, at this point, the, the conversation has been really conveyance of that entire parcel, so there hasn't been any discussion about subdividing that down or anything of that nature.
My other question would regard future development on that site, what would the process be if the school district desired to build something on that property as opposed to using that as parkland?
Yeah, so back in 2018, they had, the school district had a site plan. I wasn't sure if that site plan was still relevant or not, but you know, it was, it was the extension of or expansion of some of the, as Stephen said, existing sports facilities as well as relocation of sports facilities that have been kind of displaced due to the, the recent referendum project or expansion at the high school. Any improvements that they would require, that they would bring forward to that, to that facility, even though it would be school district land, would still be subject to a site plan review process from the plan commission?
Does anyone have questions? Okay. Okay, Larry?
I just had a couple, did we have any plans? I think at one time there was some plans for use of that park property, alternate uses. I know there's been discussion over the years off and on about that and, and what role that might play in our decision. The, the second piece is, a couple of citizens asked me, well, in a sense, it's still caught, it's still some expense regardless of who owns it to the taxpayer. I think it's more just being clear to the public that that's the case. Whether the city would renovate and upgrade the tennis courts and the parking lot, et cetera, or whether the school district does it, the taxpayer in, ultimately will be paying for that either way. I just want people to understand that.
Right.
In a sense.
I mean, answer your first question first. In my seven years, the only thing that has been mentioned in and about that area, about two years ago, that there was a discussion of Chief Rhodes had indicated that a location for a potential fire station should be somewhere on Hilltop. It was never, it was never refined as to whether that's on the east side of the street. I think most people considered the east side of the street that location, so north of the post office in the, in the soccer fields. So that, that, that's the only development I've ever been involved in, in, in seven years that, that I've been here. And, and your second comment, yes, you are, you are correct. The only, the only comment I would make to that is if the city was to make those improvements, it would be entirely 100% on the City of Milton taxpayers. Whereas if the school district were to make those properties, it would be spread out over nine municipalities. Again, tax dollars are tax dollars, but you know, at that point, it would, some would argue that it would be a more equitable sharing of the costs of improvement based on the potential users of that site, considering folks that attend Milton High School that live in, you know, Fulton Township. If the city was to make that improvement, those folks wouldn't pay anything for it, so.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure that people understood.
Thanks, Larry. Linda?
I think it's a great idea, I, I really do. I believe the school district has used that area for so long, it just really, to me, it only makes sense and I'm, I'm, I did go to the meeting for parks last night and I don't think that their requests for that paved parking lot is out of line. I think it'd be something that benefit to replace something for the Parks Commission and yet benefit the school district also. So I think it's great.
Brian?
I don't have any additional comments beyond what I already said.
The only thing, someone had mentioned, Larry, about development. One person had asked me about putting pickleball courts there long before this came up between the school district and the city, so that, that's the only question that came up.
And I would, I would be happy to address that. And in our most recent plans, pickleball lines would be on our newly renovated courts. So I have never heard of pickleball until we started talking about this, but it's amazing how many people love it, so yes, that will be part of it as well.
Well, there you have it. They were, they were, they're coming to all the elected officials to get that pickleball court.
Even maybe that, Stevie, Stephen, maybe that answers my question, since I don't believe there is a pickleball team at Milton High School at this point. But one question that did come up is, would the tennis courts be locked when they're not being used by Milton High School?
I can, I can speak to that, Al. We would, we would treat the tennis courts very similarly, similarly to the way that they're being used now, that the, that the, any FIAD classes or our, our extracurricular competitive tennis teams would have priority on the courts, but at any time that they're not being used by, by students, they'd be open for use for any community members who, who would be interested. Wouldn't have any intent to, to lock them up or to, to limit access at all.
Anything else for anyone regarding this? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this transfer so long as an amicable agreement can be reached regarding the means and method of conveyance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second, anything for anybody? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. Teresa abstained, thank you.
What, one question that I have that may benefit myself, Rich, Stephen and Attorney Schrader is there was mention, there was some mention, again, from the Parks and Recreation Committee and then from Alder Clark about some level of consideration. Is that something that you want us to, is there, is there a strong consensus from the council as to ask for something in return for that conveyance?
I would say yes, Al, for myself, but.
Do we have to make a motion on that? I just, I feel like we need to listen to what our committee members are saying. They have put a lot of time into our parks. There are representatives.
Could I, could I share something on that topic? One of the things that we would have to vet with our legal counsel is any differences between a, a transfer of real property and a, and a sale of property. If there is some expected return from the district to the city, it may be considered a purchase of the property rather than a, rather than a transfer of the real property. We would need to get our legal input on that and that may impact our ability and the process that we would need to move, use moving forward. There are some, some laws about school districts purchasing property that are different than if, if the property is transferred. So I want to make sure that, that folks are alert to that and that would be, have to be something that we would have to investigate a little bit more fully moving forward. And I can't, I can't speak for the board, obviously, but I know that taking over the, the maintenance and the upkeep of Central Park and including the repairs of the, the tennis courts and the parking lot at Central Park are a considerable, would have a considerable budget impact on the school district. So I can't, I can't say for certain that the board would be willing to fund upkeep on property that, that the school district doesn't own. And they, they might, but I can't be certain that they could and we would need to make sure that we went through a legal process on differences between a, a transfer of the property versus a purchase of the property.
Larry?
Well, that said, and I appreciate that, Rich, thank you. Maybe it would be a separate discussion then as to the future for King Park. So what I'm saying is maybe it isn't part of this motion, so. But a separate discussion in the future on how to handle that, potentially.
So, are we good just, just having staff move forward with discussions with the, with the school district?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my thought as I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, based, based on Rich's comments, you know, there are compensations that aren't monetary in terms of, and in fact, they've talked about some of them and with the potential paving of the King Park lot. And as Larry says, that would be part of a separate. Uh, and as Larry says, that would be part of a separate kind of a discussion, so. I I think there's some latitude there. Um, I I'm I'm not thinking about a sale, I'm thinking of a transfer as the wording is.
So so based on that, I think, um, you know, Rich could certainly reach out to his legal counsel, but then uh it could concurrently. Um, Attorney Schrader and myself and and Rich and Stephen and your attorney can start working on what a conveyance would look like. Obviously, any documentation or or uh. You know, approval of that would need to come back to the council, so there would be another opportunity to see it. I I do agree with Larry that, you know, that could be a separate conversation. Stephen, do you just want the parking lot at King Park too or not?
Uh, no thanks.
Well, I tried, you know, so.
Well, and certainly the motion was for a transfer, so.
Yeah, correct.
Great.
I wasn't trying to muddy the waters.
No, I just wanted, I wanted clarification for that, just so Rich and and Mark and Stephen and I kind of knew what our marching orders were from the various groups and. You know, from from my personal perspective, and I say this from my personal perspective, I would, I would, you know, I look at all the things that the school district has done. Um, you know, the, you know, constructing, reconstructing that parking lot at Central Park will benefit the entire community. You know, at some point, repairs will need to be made to that pavilion. Again, those costs will be shared out over nine municipalities as opposed to one. There's certainly a benefit to the Milton taxpayers there. Um, you know, it it costs us between ten and fifteen thousand dollars just to keep the lights on. Um, you know, again, sharing that cost over nine municipalities is much more equitable to the taxpayers at Milton. Um, uh, you know, and those costs are only going to go up. Um, you know, Howie won't need to ride a mower around out there once a week anymore, so he's. Things, so.
That'll be me out there mowing now.
Okay, all right.
And and we also have the demonstration of the stewardship that's been.
Right.
In the past with Showberg, so.
There's a high value in that, in my opinion.
We appreciate that too.
Just from the school district standpoint, we really appreciate the the uh collaboration with with the city too. In the three years that I've been here, I think we've had a really good relationship with the city of Milton. Uh, I think that that strong relationship really benefits our students uh. And and our staff in the school district, so we want to do everything to to maintain that too. And and we're very appreciative of of the partnerships that we have and how well those things go.
So are we? Okay, um, let's keep moving on, um. Anybody that uh that has already had their items spoken about, you can stay for team building or you're free to leave.
Thank you, everybody.
They're running, they're running away. Is it too early to require Kelsey's day for team building? No, no, not at all.
Just send us an invoice for services rendered.
Okay, discussion direction and possible action regarding outdoor displays of merchandise within the downtown business district.
So this is a request that has uh kind of been born out of a, of another request that came before the Plan Commission a few months ago. Um, at the time, it was uh just Farmhouse Fines was looking to display some of their merchandise out in front of their store. Um. They came before the Plan Commission and Plan Commission did give them approval based on an exemption in our ordinances. Uh, however, uh, the Plan Commission further directed staff to investigate. Uh, creating uh, creating or amending or revising our ordinances to just allow this type of activity to happen by right. Uh, or by permit. Um, so before doing that, staff wanted to come to council to get further direction on what exactly you would like to see. In such an ordinance revision and or creation. So in my memo, I've outlined a couple of different uh things to consider. Um, you know, the first being, does the council wish to permit the outdoor displays of merchandise? Um, as folks may have seen uh up and down Parkview Drive, and I've included pictures of it in our uh in your packet tonight. You know, there's some really nice holiday decor that is now kind of lining the storefronts up and down Parkview Drive. By ordinance, that is not permitted. Um, so some of those stores would be in violation. Clearly, we're not out there enforcing them. Uh, but you you know, it certainly is within our ordinances to ask for those items to be removed in front of all the storefronts. Other than Farmhouse Fines. So Hattie and Elsie's and Holt's Tax Service and Ashley Nelson and uh they they would all have to kind of remove those those items. I don't know that that's anybody's desire, but at the end of the day, it's the council's decision as to whether they want to permit that. And if they do want to permit it, if you do want to permit it, the question is that we would have. Uh, is what mechanism would that permission be granted? Would it just simply be by right? Uh, could, would we, would we create an ordinance that indicates that? Businesses within the B three zone district would be allowed to display merchandise and this decor on the public sidewalk. No greater than two feet, extending two feet beyond the uh front of the store. Or uh and just have it be by right for everybody, or would it be on a case by case basis? Similar to what currently exists and how Farmhouse Fines kind of went through the process? Or would it be by a permit? Um, and as you can see in the memo, we've attached examples from other uh municipalities and permitting is a very popular approach. Uh, to allow that type of merchandise to be displayed by a permit process. So if it's by a permit, then how long would the permit be good for and what would the cost to be to the permit if there would be a a cost to it? And then, you know, what parameters would be placed on that permit? Um, so there's a couple of things to consider. It seems like, you know, it's one of those things, it seems like uh, you know, kind of, most people don't think about it. They want to put something out in front of their business and sure, why shouldn't they be able to, but at the end of the day, it is the public right of way. It is the public sidewalk, it is public. Um, so questions have come up about, you know, well, who gave them the right to do that? Uh, so, you know, that's why the discussion I think is here tonight. So I think what we're looking for is really an answer to those two questions that I put in the memo. Do you wish to permit outdoor displays of merchandise? And if so, how how would you like that permission to be granted to those business owners?
And we, so we do have occupancy permits that are issued, right?
We have, we have business licenses that are issued as soon as a business opens, and that's a one-time issuance. And we do have occupancy licenses as well, as well, and that's a one-time uh uh license as well, so. That question kind of came up in staff meeting, can we tie it to that? You know, that's one approach, yeah, but just remember that it's only a one-time thing. We don't issue them on an annual basis, I guess, is my point.
The way that I would look at it, it, you know, I don't think that we want to be. You know, approving these on a uh, an ongoing uh basis, so. I would prefer uh something that is, uh, I guess by right, but the way that I would. Uh, look at it is not two feet out from the building or whatever measurement out from the building. I think the important thing is how much space is left. Um, uh, in other words, you know, what we're looking for is um, uh, unimpeded pedestrian flow. And um, uh, I think uh compliance with ADA requirements. Uh, you know, those kinds of things to ensure that um, there is uh kept open a right of way, so. Rather than a distance out from the building, and I know that would mean it would vary from uh business to business. Uh, it's almost a measurement from uh the curb or a measurement of the uh, of the space remaining.
So I think that we had some, you really got us some good examples here, and I'm just going to tell you right off the bat. I liked, um, I liked what Edgerton did. I think it covers those important things that you just mentioned, Bill, with the um. Amount of clear space between the uh any curb or obstruction, which would in this case be like a garbage can or a planter. Um. Um, and I don't, I would, I don't think it's necessary to come to the council, I think if we just. Um, if we just had uh the regulations. An ordinance saying what our regulations are, and then maybe just make sure that. That's included in with our business licenses. Because um, one of the questions that I had from what you had said, Al, is how often? Does somebody take out a business license and are we actually getting licenses for all the businesses that are opening?
Yes, yeah, so bu- a business license is 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 required every time a new business opens. So once they have a license, they they never need, they never uh need to apply for that again or. Or y- you know, re re-up it, uh unless they move to a new location. Um, so yeah, every business in the city of Milton does have a business license. Um, sometimes businesses open. Um, and we, you know, and they they get a business license after the fact because they didn't know that they needed a business license and, you know, we don't. We don't track the goings-ons of the private enterprises, but um, but yeah, every life, every, every, every business in Milton has a business license, yep. In the Edgerton model, um, first off, Jenny was the one who provided those examples. She did a great job of researching it, and obviously she knows a lot about Edgerton. The Edgerton one is by a permit basis, and they're issued on an annual basis, is that correct? Jenny?
Uh, yes, it's an annual permit and the approval is done at the same time liquor license or is or done, it's on the same, the same schedule.
But what I hear Linda saying is 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 perhaps we just draft an ordinance that just allows it by right with these conditions. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Larry, Larry and then Ryan.
Oh, okay, or Ryan can go. Um, one of the thoughts I had is at the point of when we issue the business license. If we give people the, we say if you'd like to be able to put displays out and within the parameters that we set. Uh, if 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 there was a fee that was attached to that, could we designate that for uh beautification? So planters, things like that, because that's, you know, where where we, that was an idea that I had. The business owner sees it as a win-win. Wow, I get to make my place look nice on the outside, but I also contribute to the beautification along Parkview or Merchant Road.
Yeah, we could set those those uh, the revenues, if you want to call it that.
Yeah.
Um, into a separate fund. Depending on what you charge for that permit, it might take a while for that to to accumulate to a reasonable amount, but um. You know, because we don't issue, we issue probably between ten and twenty business licenses a year, and not all of those are in the downtown.
Sure.
Sure, some of those are at like the Piggly Wiggly Plaza, for example, that's all private property. They can do whatever they want on their sidewalks. So.
They could make the down, they could make the downtown look spiffy and we call it a spiff district.
So I just have a follow-up question, just so I'm understanding the conversation. Are you saying? With every business license going forward, we would um assign a fee to every business license. Uh, regardless of whether they had a public sidewalk or.
I, yeah, I don't think that, I think Larry was saying they could opt to receive that permission for a fee. Yeah, so if you're, if you're sheer magic, for example, up on High Street, they're they're a business that has a business license. They wouldn't have any interest in that. Well, maybe they would, maybe they would say, hey, we want their downtowns to look great too, I don't know, but. That's all private property, so they would, there would be no reason for them to request that. I think that's what you're saying, I'm sorry, Larry.
No, I think so, that would, I was thinking it would be an option at that point of getting the license. Or in the future, if they decide to, they could still come and pay the fee in and do it also later on, I mean.
And we we could then, if 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 the idea is, and this is the same idea that Mark Langer actually kind of talked about at staff meeting yesterday. Um, is tied to the business license, we could retroactively then go back to those existing businesses in the downtown and say, hey. You know, if you'd like to have outdoor displays of merchandise, here's the process and here's the fee. It's a one-time fee and you're good to go for as long as your business is in and operations. It's a little bit of, you know, tail chasing, but uh it's it's certainly doable, and I think it's a good idea.
Brian.
I was gonna say that I think we should permit it. Um, the reason I think we should permit it, and it should be a yearly permit for a very low price. And that reasoning is if somebody were to violate some of the rules we have for it, we have no mechanism if you try to tie it to their business license. What are you gonna do, revoke their business license? So if we did a permit, you could then say, well, we're not gonna give you a permit this year because you violated it last year. Because you blocked, you blocked off more than my space, so I think we should permit it, but maybe at a fee that just covers the, you know, the cost of. The person to approve it. You know, nothing, a very low fee. And that low fee could still go towards beautification. But I think that it, you know, it's should be permitted for that reason alone, just to give more protection, plus. I liked what I was reading in the way that with the um, from Cambria, they were talking about they use it as a liability.
Yes.
That permit, and whereas the business license wouldn't necessarily cover that probably. So it does take away some liability having to fill out that permit once a year.
Teresa.
Yes, uh, can you also make sure that it? Uh, parallels with anything in the snow removal? Mm-hmm. I'll see, so that, you know, people put out things for Christmas and all of that, that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, it it's a good idea, and uh. You know, business owners may not think about that until they're forced to clear their sidewalks and they've got to go around. Frosty and a pumpkin and a turkey and, you know, a rack of clothing, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, um, so, would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, before I do, can I just, one other point, I think. I like, I like Brian's idea also because in case there's something, and I don't know, I don't want to over-regulate this. But in case something is inappropriate or considered inappropriate for public display. Then we'd have a control mechanism for that too. I mean, I don't want to try to write all that in an ordinance, I mean, but.
It is tough, and that's an example that was given to us, uh, that that a business was displaying. Not inappropriate, but dangerous items.
Okay.
And that caused the the that that municipality to say, whoa, hold on here.
Yeah.
We really don't want that just hanging out on the sidewalk.
So that's why I think it'd be good to have it as a yearly review type thing, rather than just being a blanket, you can do it if you're business here.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say in summation, but go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, when do you want this to start? When do you want to start enforcing those next year?
Yeah, I I would, I I my. I understand and appreciate the reason for the Plan Commission to provide the sunset for Farmhouse Fines. Um, you know, but the, you know, it's as with most things. Once you get into it, you realize that there's more to it than you than you thought about, and that the options are nearly infinite. Um, so what, what I think what I hear folks saying is that um, you're directing staff to create. Uh, a permitting process for the display of merchandise and or decor in front of. Businesses within the B three zone district. And that permitting permitting process will outline the parameters in which displays can be. Uh, uh, displayed in front of the stores. Things like, you know, ensuring that there's not in inappropriate or dangerous materials and that the sidewalk is free to travel and. Um, a- a- and and it doesn't impede with snow removal. And that those permits would be on an annual basis uh approved by, uh approved administratively. And with a low fee that then would be uh set aside for uh some sort of downtown beautification effort. That's, that's kind of what I heard. Did I miss any aspects of?
I think you covered it pretty good.
I think so.
And you're limited to your property.
Yeah. Yep.
And then, um.
So, but I I guess I'm sorry to answer your point. We'll work on that and bring it back. Um, you know, when when I think we've got in a position where we can have it reviewed. Fortunately, uh, or unfortunately, Christmas is right around the corner, and we know that there are places that are. In anticipation, there's a business in town now that actually sells outdoor displays for other businesses, so. This is not going to go away, but we want to make sure that we, that everybody's on the same page, so, so we'll, we'll bring something back as soon as we can.
Um, then would this replace like the sidewalk sale?
Well, I would, uh, you know, that's, that's a great question, and maybe we can talk about that internally, I don't want to speak for Jenny or for.
Okay.
Schrader, um, I I see that as slightly different because that's a a much more. Robust use of the sidewalk and a temporary one, whereas this is somewhat more of a longer duration, but. Great question.
Larry.
One more comment, I'm sorry, but the Plan Commission in, you know, we, we struggled because we didn't know how long to allow that. So there may be question about, well, my permit ends October first, and. So how do we, maybe. so how do we, maybe a thought might be given, Alan, do we sort of um, with nudging and proper notice, allow people before we approve something, does that make sense? I I'm worried that people are gonna get all mad and frustrated with us saying, well, you know, I don't know.
They already are, they already are.
Everybody is every day.
I know, okay, we'll leave it at that.
I'll let you read my inbox one day.
Could they, could we approve something and then just have a, you know, a start date that's later or it or once you approve an ordinance, does it automatically goes into effect? It's, I can't, I can't remember. Mark?
The ordinance would go right into effect, it would have to be published first.
Of course.
You can, yeah, it, it, you're, well, in order to enforce it by penalty, it needs to be published. Uh, and so most often that's what happens and I would recommend that otherwise is a toothless ordinance. And you can specify the effective date of an ordinance. So in other words, most commonly, we do that, we just say that the ordinance is effective on passage and publication. But that's not required, you can specify a later date for the effective date of it, you know. That, of course, is not uncommon in state legislation where it's effective at a later date, so you can do that if you wish. Yeah, I think what I'm hearing really is is that the council is looking to direct, as Al said, that the staff to, to work on an outdoor display of merchandise ordinance and bring it back for the council to consider. I think it. I don't know if you need anything more direct than that, Al, but I think.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Linda?
I was just wondering, so with this ordinance, what happens? Excuse me, what happens to the agreement that we have with farmhouse fines right now? Where does this put them? Since they've already gone to plan.
Yeah, the ordinance would supersede it. You know, so, so they would have to follow the same parameters. I think what, I think what Anisa's asking too, in 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 her question is, you know, the plan commission put a sunset date
We did.
On their current allowance of outdoor displays as October first, that's, that's next week.
Correct.
There's no way the council will, the council doesn't even have a meeting before that date to 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 enact an ordinance. So I think that's part of your question, right, Anisa?
Yeah.
And we, and now we have, you know, five or six businesses that have outdoor displays as well and they're all in current, they're currently in violation as well.
So I just don't think our intention is to be jerks.
Right. That's what I was getting, that's what, that was my point.
So is there a motion? Linda?
I was gonna make that motion that Mark said.
You know, Mark's gonna ask for a raise if we keep making him do our motions.
I'll second that.
Second the raise or second the motion?
Does anybody want to read back the motion so we know what we're voting on and it's clear in the minutes?
Mark, would you like to do that? I have a portion of it, a motion to direct staff to draft an outdoor display permit process within the B three zoning district outlining the parameters with an annual fee and return to council. How would you like to change that?
Yeah, I think just to add motion to direct staff per an ordinance containing than everything you said. And I think that's efficient.
It's a team effort, the team effort here in Milton.
That's the motion and that's the second. Okay.
Well said.
All those in favor?
Aight.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, that was just a lot of effort and hard work and I hope our businesses appreciate that we are very thoughtful and intentional. All right, discussion and possible action regarding engineering services northeast lift station concept plan.
So I'll let Mark Langer take this one since this is his wheelhouse. Lift stations and whatnot.
So we've had um, some inquiries for sewer service to an area that we don't have a way to serve with gravity sewer. To provide service, we would have to build a lift station. As part of that, we would need to know what the service area for the lift station is, sizing of the service area, pumps, capacities. Uh, so this work order from Backstrom Woodman is the preliminary work to kind of lay that out so that we can determine what's the best next step, whether to proceed with the more or more towards final design or you know, hold off, but short of doing this stuff, it's hard for staff to really say what we can and can't serve, I guess. Other than right now to just say we can't serve it.
Right, so to add, add a little bit more to that, uh, we've had development inquiries and I don't think this is any secret. We've had development inquiries for what is known as the Bonnie Mead Golf Course. There is, there is multiple developers who have expressed interest in developing that with residential development. Um, at this time, we cannot serve that and in fact, as you may recall, there is a portion of the Journey Hill subdivision as they move to the east, that is going to be challenging to serve. So before, you know, before we spend a lot of time and effort and resources and money on on working with those developers, this would really be the first step of the process. It's very similar to the effort that we undertook just a few years ago along Parkview Drive when we had known development activity that was gonna occur on Pierce Farms, but we knew we couldn't serve it. Um, so the first step in that process was to go through exactly what Mark is proposing here is to develop a service area or a, or at least a reasonable service area. Uh, so then we could have a better understanding of what uh, the capacity of the list station would need to be, where it would need to be located and and what all would go into the construction of that facility and its ancillary components, sanitary sewer sizing, which direction is it gonna go, so. So this doesn't lock anybody into anything, but we know that there is, there's, that there's been several inquiries about this development that that it's, I I would say it's very likely in the next decade or so that that will come to fruition, if not sooner.
And.
Larry, go ahead.
Well, and it would help inform developers about potential costs, correct?
Yep.
Absolutely, got you. And which they need to know too, because thank you.
Um, Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Brian?
Nope.
Devon?
No.
Bill?
No.
Linda?
When exactly would we be doing this?
What's that?
When exactly are you planning on building the lift station?
Well, that's not really what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, we wouldn't build the lift station until, until we had development that warranted the lift station's construction.
Okay.
Anything for anybody else? Is there a motion? Oh, Teresa, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve the work order for engineering services in the amount of seven thousand two hundred for the northeast lift station concept plan.
Second.
Well done, well done. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aight.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on revisions to the residential exterior improvement program guidelines.
Inga, did you wanna take this one or do you want me to do it?
Um, I I don't care either way, um, the main changes for the the guidelines really are just trying to streamline the process a little bit better and make it a little bit more clear for community members when they're applying for the grants. So we're setting a hard deadline for grant applications for initial submittals of the first Monday in April. And then after that, we'll collect those, review them at the CDA level and then take them to council in batches. So there won't be a first come, first served type of language in the guidelines anymore. They'll be all reviewed in batches. If there's still funding available after that first batch is reviewed, then same thing the next month, they'll be due that first Monday of the month, they'll be reviewed in a batch by the CDA and then by the council. Again, that's the main change, the other changes are just related to process and trying to match the policy to the process of what's happening. I don't know if there are any questions or if Al, you have anything to add to that?
No, this program has been remarkably successful and every year it's become more and more competitive as the word gets out about it, which is a great thing. And and this year especially since the council was was gracious enough to increase the allocation towards it. You know, we saw more and more interest in that program. And it, you know, it's never really an issue until you get down to that last, you know, seven thousand dollars and you've got five requests, that total twenty-five thousand dollars. How do you make those decisions? And the CDA has been so thoughtful about the process, I I continue to be impressed with how they work through it. You know, they recognize the fact that these funds are competitive and they're looking to stretch every dollar and get the biggest bang for your buck. Um, and they're willing to kind of uh, consider all options, so it's a just a Bennett phenomenal program and, uh, you know, this is only our third year, so we're still learning about it and what makes sense to folks, so uh, the the CDA always has good suggestions and this is right in line with it.
Yes.
Larry, did you have a question or comment?
I just, we've had a couple of years now experience with it. I think it'd be great if we could put something out on the website or other media showing examples of what people have done. Because it really, when I drive around and look at some of these projects, it's really neat to see and what I did notice was neighbors started to do things like touch enough paint on their porch or you know, planting flowers or, you know, it's kind of that habitat for humanity thing. You build a new house in a kind of a runner rundown more neighborhood and also then everybody starts fixing up their places, so I think it's kind of cool, so anyway.
I think so too. Yeah, I'm really proud of us for doing this.
Yeah, and that's something the the CDA had talked about of doing some kind of a more formalized end of year report on the, on the projects.
Yep. And we, we do require after pictures, we require before pictures and after pictures, so we have those, which is great. That's the, that's the kind of great stuff that Inga thinks of that.
That's cool.
You don't.
Well, and it's an example to the taxpayers of how their dollars are being used to improve their community, so I think that's a wonderful thing too.
Investing it right back into our neighborhoods, so that's awesome. Any other questions or comments by anybody? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the residential exterior improvement program guidelines.
As revised?
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the use of park funds for the purchase of picnic tables and benches for Railroad Park in Merchant Row.
So I sent out a memo earlier today that outlined what the Parks and Recreation Commission is looking at doing in Railroad Park and then in a grassy section of Merchant Row kind of near where Casa Fiesta is located. That stretch of parking lot there, there's a nice grassy space where we could put some picnic tables in and kind of benefit the businesses on that stretch of Merchant Row as well. So first up, we're looking at putting in three customized benches that are customized, the back would be some sort of railroad theme design. So trying to add some functional art to the space of Railroad Park. Um, and we'd be looking for sponsors for those and then we're also looking at adding a bench near where the bike repair station is located. Just to add a little comfort to anyone that's using that, that space as well. We're looking at purchasing six picnic tables, four would be located in Railroad Park and then two would be located in that grassy area down Merchant Row a little ways. So what we're looking at doing is buying those six picnic tables now. The pricing for things is a little volatile, so this is a good time to kind of get those different items now and have them ready for the spring and then we'll work on getting some sponsorships for those as well. So it wouldn't actually end up costing the park fund any money. We'd actually make a slight profit on this project. But we do need to use some park funds in that meantime as we're seeking those sponsorships for for these amenities.
Linda, any questions or comments?
Um, I would like to just make a motion to approve the request.
Just not allow any further discussion by your fellow council members.
It was, it's a great idea what they're planning, it really is, it's great.
Teresa?
I have some comments. I do think it is, I do think it is a great idea. Um, my comments though are, you know, a couple of years ago, the gathering place was in a position to begin fundraising and at the same time, however, we found out that the Veterans Park was also planning to build you know, or move forward with a building project and so as a group, we, you know, politely stepped back and backed off on our fundraising to allow them the opportunity to move forward with their project because it would be you know, just rude to try to lay that off on citizens at the same time and take away their fighter doing that while they needed to do the fundraising. And so at this time, the the gathering place is trying to get to the the last part of their project which involves fundraising with selling, like selling benches and doing some things that really would be much the same that is being proposed with this project and doing that this spring. And so I'm wondering if somehow we could do this in some way that is not all at the same time. And making sure that citizens aren't hit up with the same thing at the same time. And coming up with a timeline that doesn't crash.
Thanks Teresa. Larry, anything?
Um, the only thing, I I sent a little note to Inga earlier, but I think it's really cool that they're ADA accessible tables. I appreciate that.
Uh, Bill?
I've been kind of pushing the idea of a network of benches through the community for a long time, so I'm I'm, I I really do like this idea. I don't know how best to accommodate, um, you know, Teresa's comment. Sure understand that in terms of uh, competing, I I don't know whether there's any way that we can coordinate that well, and I don't know enough about, you know, the specifics of the gathering places effort. The related effort, I mean, I know the bigger project, but so I guess I go either way, I certainly am supportive of the idea of the purchase, just the timing is the question.
Brian?
I like the idea of getting the benches for that area, it looks like you could use them.
I don't have anything to add, I like the idea.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? And the motion or, Inga, so you would, if the council approved this, um, then how, what would your procedure be going forward? Like you order the benches?
I'd, I'd order the benches, the, I'm sorry, the picnic tables from Uline. Have those ready to go for spring and seek sponsorships for those. The customized benches from um, P, PGM, the production grinding and manufacturing out of Monroe. That we'd wanna seek out the sponsors. That we'd want to seek out the sponsors first so we can work with them on customizing the bench to what they want and need from that. So there's going to, that that's, I guess that's kind of the process. Does that make sense? Okay, so the goal is to have everything ready to be put in place for spring, which is when you'd expect more outdoor dining and outdoor activities at that time.
Okay, alright. Any for Larry?
Well, that's good news in a sense then, Inga, right? And Man of America, in a sense, part of the project could be funded now between now and the end of the year. Those those three benches, right?
Yeah, and and I do have have one person specifically interested in the benches now. She's someone who's been talking about benches in that area for the last year or two with the Parks and Recreation Commission. So it'd be nice to move forward on this project for for that space.
In that way, that would reduce a little bit, hopefully, the impact on the gathering place fundraiser in the spring. Because follow what I'm saying, some of it is done this year. There'd be maybe less less taken away from next year's effort from the gathering place. Because all we have is the picnic tables left and the bench.
Is there a motion by council? Larry?
I'll make a motion to approve the I'll make a motion to approve the four picnic tables, three benches and additional bench for Railroad and the adjacent
Green space?
On Merchant Row.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aight.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
So so just to be clear, the council's approving that I'm going to spend $6,434.59 on the picnic tables from Uline right now.
Correct.
And Inga, how much is in the park fund?
I don't have that that number offhand right now.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and and it's going to be reduced because we did approve the purchase of the playground equipment for North Goodrich Park at the last meeting. So I'd have to reevaluate where that's at right now.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second and that motion carries. Alright, general items. Anything for anyone? Committee reports?
Um, just from Parks and Recreation Commission, they did meet last night. So obviously, we're looking at picnic tables and benches in Railroad Park, but they're also going to be reviewing their plans that are outlined in the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan for 2022, 2023, and 2024 in the coming weeks, just to make sure that everything's still lining up how they want it to. And if there's, I don't know, anything else to reconsider, I guess, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Plan Commission met earlier today and approved a site plan for Ivonics to construct their detached storage facility and also approved two extraterritorial plat- or extraterritorial CSMs. I did let the Plan Commission know that at this time, the Red Hawk Farm Second Edition subdivision is on hold indefinitely. As they work to negotiate a deal with the adjoining landowner to have sanitary sewer extended to their prop- property. It's unfortunate, but it is a kind of a civil matter and hopefully they can work it out sooner rather than later. That was, that was a Plan Commission update.
And I don't know if Ryan was going to say anything for Historic Preservation Commission, but we are working on an agreement with Rich Fletcher from Rome Rome Around Tours, I believe is the company name. He coordinates a lot of tours for the historic districts in Janesville and we're looking at working with him on developing some tours for Milton. And then the expectation would be that he'd offer those historic walking tours. There'd be a series of three of them and then he'd offer each one at least once during the 2022 season, I guess.
Thanks for mentioning that. I forgot.
I was just working on the agreement today, so fresh in my mind.
Any other committee reports? Okay, let's go with staff reports. Kelsey, I'll give you a pass just this time now. We'll go with Jenny.
Okay, so I am excited. And next Tuesday, September 28th is National Voter Registration Day. And the staff is planning a small open house. We're going to be having an express vote demonstrations, stickers, balloons, prepackaged refreshments, and also videos going throughout the day. And so we're hoping that everyone can attend. It is an open house from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so there is not any set events, so we're not encouraging large crowds all at one time. But yeah, anytime you can stop by. And then also last week, I attended the Treasurers Conference where I learned a little bit more about the redistricting that is going on. So there is an approval going through on the 23rd for the Rock County for the supervisory map. As of right now, there there hasn't been any discussion of when that final will be, but then after that, then the city of Milton will be starting their, building their wards and then that will be a council. My, the goal is October 5th, but it depends if Rock County is going to approve their supervisory map on the 23rd.
There's some public hearings that have to take place at the county level, right Bill?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, Inga, anything?
I had something that I forgot. But we are recruiting right now for the Assistant Water Works Operator position. So if you know of anyone that might be interested in that, please send them to the city's website to apply.
And that's because we promoted somebody, correct?
Yes, that is right. Noah will be promoted to the Water Works Operator position effective November 1st. Ron Griffin, who is currently in that position, he will be retiring. Oh, and I did remember my one other thing. I will be posting a short podcast that Jenny and I recorded. It's all about National Voter Registration Day. And we are trying to revive the We Are Milton podcast. So if you have any topic suggestions, please let me know. Kelsey, get ready for being on a future podcast.
There's no video in the podcast, though.
Not not this time.
Not a promise or a hard and fast rule because I'm pretty sure that I was videotaped a lot in 2020.
There was a reason. Inga's battery died, so that's the reason it happened.
Technical problems this time.
Okay, thanks. Ashley, you have something going on with cards and stuff too, right?
We do. So we're about halfway to our goal of our 60 library cards in the month of September. So there are nine days left. So if you do not have a library card or a family member does not have a library card, come to the library and get a library card. So staff can get color bombed. For the library, that's about all we have going on. However, today we did receive news that we received the Drug Free Communities Grant through the CDC. So shout out to all the Mountain Youth Coalition members who wrote that grant. And I'm excited to be a part of implementing that in the years to come.
So if you recall, there was a couple of positions tied to that grant that council approved. So just, you know, continually adapting and changing and going forward with great projects that are really impactful to our community. So so my thought is if you come in for the open house about registering to vote and voter registration stuff, is there any way you could get a library card then too?
Yes, that's actually a really good idea. Inga, I'll talk to you about that, kind of setting up, because you're going to have it at City Hall, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to be in the council chambers. We're going to have cookies too, so.
Okay.
We're excited.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in touch with you. That's a good idea.
And then just to add on, just another committee report, I guess, for the Story Garden Subcommittee, we are looking at opening up another online merchandise store starting October 1st. So watch for more information for that. We're just finalizing what items we will have available.
Alright, okay, so I think Howie, Howie is excited to go next. Is there any way that DPW can get library cards and voter registration incorporated into their daily work too?
Probably not. Let's see, it's just regular, the street projects, those things are getting completed, but the Splash Park is going to be closed Thursday. So, end of summer.
It's gonna get cold.
You're just breaking my heart, just breaking my heart. Mark E.
I'm running Blanche, hopefully paved within the next week. The chip ceiling project took place a couple of weeks ago. The lead service line program, there's been 40 lead service lines replaced on the private side. There's at least 16 to go. We've got a contractor replacing ones or public side lead services that started this week. And we'll continue to replace those as we know of them or find them as part of the private lead service program.
Alright, and again, I'm thinking you're not doing any voter registration or library card stuff either. Alright, so we'll just figure that out for next year. Alright, did I miss anybody besides Al?
Yes.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, I did. Were you, I don't think I saw your face the whole time. That's probably.
I I'm multitasking tonight. Not a stakeout. Yeah, exactly.
Don't, don't blow it.
J-PAC, whatever. So if if y'all are interested, the Return of the Glass Slipper performance is on October 15th and October 16th as part of their youth series, so.
Are you in it?
Girl had rehearsal tonight, so.
You are in it?
No, my, my daughter isn't. The only update I have tonight is I am working with Northside. Kind of an, kind of an annual ordeal, trying to figure out if there's anything we can do better with school pickup times and the vehicle congestion. So we're throwing around some ideas, some of which might become, might come before you for a look at. Stay tuned on that. In the meantime, I'll repeat what I did the last meeting. Throwing the number of cars into our school zones in 2021 look much different than the number of cars that would have been around when these buildings were constructed. So patience and taking your time and giving one another grace is probably the best way to handle things for right now.
Having kids walk and ride their bike.
Would certainly be helpful removing individual cars from these pickup spots.
Carpool. It's, it never went away, carpooling.
Roller blade, skateboard. Okay, Al, thank you. And I'm sorry for, I'm in there, he just disappeared again, so. Sorry for missing you.
No worries.
So he's not leaving before team building.
I'm gonna be driving. I'm gonna be driving, so I'm by example, by example.
Oh, yeah, some sort of safe driving thing he probably does.
So as Inga mentioned, we are currently recruiting for the Assistant Wastewater Operator position. Once that posi- or Assistant Water Works, I'm sorry. Once that position is filled, we will have full staff in all departments for the first time, I don't know, maybe ever. But then we'll have to turn around and recruit for a vacant position when Howie retires back in 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 November. So it won't be long. We won't, we won't live at full staff for very long, so.
November 22?
November of 22, of, oh, of 22, yeah. November 22nd? We might go the push.
I said
So that'll, that'll be exciting. It'll be short-lived, but that'll be exciting. We've got a lot of new staff and and, you know, bringing a lot of great ideas and staff meetings are certainly, you know, have have some great discussions because we have these new perspectives and Kelsey will certainly fit right in and bring her Janesville perspectives as well. And we're excited for all that. So you know, it just continues to be, you know, business as usual, even when we were short-staffed. Now that we're full-staffed, we'll be even more effective and efficient than than we were when we were super short-staffed, so. It's exciting. It's a good time to be here.
And then there's that dressing up component that we added to everybody's work policy.
The stress, the stress that it creates.
Okay, so did we cover committee reports and staff reports? I didn't miss, didn't miss anybody. Alright, so now we're going on to team building. So this is like twofold team building, okay? So and you can pretend like you're like in elementary school for this portion of it and you can yell out the answer to this question. Nobody gets any gifts for being first, but I'm just, this is just gonna be easy. This is gonna be easy. So what is unique about today?
Cell phones.
I mean, okay. This is why I don't have a teaching license.
In today's world, I'm sorry, I apologize. I already failed teacher.
No, no, the idea is to have fun, so I like, okay, let me say today is September 21st.
I will say it is my mother-in-law's birthday today.
Okay. Any, any, anything else?
It's my three-year anniversary of being library director.
Awesome. And Theresa, you said fall what?
Fall weather.
That's, that's really, really close to what I'm looking, and all of these are just like A for effort. Devon?
It is International Day of Peace.
Okay, and you know, obviously, we don't acknowledge that at City Council because we're not a peaceful group or just wild body raucous.
It's the night of a Milton City Council meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, right, right. What else? You guys all just don't want to admit that you're sorcerers, right? This is why everybody's holding back.
Day is the last day of summer.
Which is means what?
Tomorrow's.
Autumnal equinox.
Yes, yes. Who said that? Who said that?
The guy who's driving.
Awesome. Okay, that is true. And and I am really so happy that the chief could participate that part of it because it might be a little bit more difficult to participate in the second part of it. So if you can, if you want to remember these names, it's fine. If you want to write them down, it's okay too. F. Scott Fitzgerald. And you'll use these later. After I read these names off, they will be important later. So F. Scott Fitzgerald would be A. B is Percy Bush Shelley. And and don't, don't be Googling this either. I see. C is Albert Camus. D is Emily Bronte. So A is F. Scott Fitzgerald, B is Percy Bush Shelley, C is Albert Camus, and D is Emily Bronte. Now, I am going to read you just a line from a poem and then you tell me who wrote this line. And it's related to us. So I'm not going to do like, you know, 25 minutes of poetry readings. I will spare you from that. But you know, we can just be a little artsy here a little bit, right? So every leaf speaks bliss to me, fluttering from the autumn tree.
It's Albert Camus.
Okay, Al says C.
I say I say C.
You say C?
I say B, Shelley.
Shelley?
You go C as well.
C?
I say B.
B? Anybody else want to jump in here, like the librarian?
Uh, whatever one was Bronte.
That would be D.
I will say D.
Devon's putting all his faith in the library. Smart move, Devon.
Me too, I'm a D.
What the heck? Nobody has taken F. Scott Fitzgerald before he goes all alone, so I'll take A.
He was probably drinking when he was writing.
Can you just put me down for anything that Ashley says?
Okay, we'll, we'll do it for this one, but you'll, you know, you might want to just give her an opportunity to be wrong sometimes too. Anybody else want to weigh in on this one? I'll read it one more time, in case, uh, I'm gonna give you a time to reconsider your answers. "Every leaf speaks bliss to me, fluttering from the autumn tree."
Tell me, switch your answer to Camus.
All right, are you ready?
Yeah, I, 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 I think I'm gonna go with Camus too. Switch me to C.
Okay, did anybody else switch, besides Bill, that I didn't hear, because I was laughing so hard at myself? Are you, are you ready? The library has it with D, Emily Bronte.
What?
Uh, good lord. Okay, that's cool.
Are you sure about that?
I was so sure in Al's quick response that I went with Al.
Okay.
I had the best method to just go with Ashley.
So Ashley is going to speak last now. All right, so now it's narrowed down to three, so that makes it easier. No repeating. "Life starts all over again when it gets crisp in the fall."
That sounds like Fitzgerald.
Al, you're going with, um, A?
I'm going with B.
Okay.
I'll go with A.
I'll say F. Scott Fitzgerald.
A, okay.
Say A as well.
A. Wait till Ashley goes and y'all change your answers. Um, B, Larry? Okay.
Kind of stuck on Shelley right now.
Did you get my A?
I didn't.
A.
I'm gonna go with B.
Okay.
I don't know, but I'll go with A.
You're gonna go with A? Mark, did you want to chime in now that Ashley won?
A.
I'm going with A too.
Anybody else that wants to? Did I get everybody? Is Mark, is Mark asked even participating?
No, gotta catch him.
Not so bad of a teacher that I don't know the kid that's sleeping in the class. Okay, you ready? Or Mark, did you want to take, take a guess?
Given the high stakes involved, I'll go with C.
That's awesome. Yeah, there's a side bet going on here. On the internet. I hope y'all are winning me some money now. Okay, "Life starts all over again when it gets crisp in the fall." Final answers for everybody? It is A, F. Scott Fitzgerald. There you go. Narrowing it down, we're narrowing it down.
I'm not guessing very well tonight.
No.
I still question that first one, but that's just me. I mean, you wrote "The Fall." I mean, that was, that and "The Stranger" are his two big, greatest books.
I love the, yeah, I love "The Stranger." Okay, ready? "Autumn is a second spring when every leaf is a flower."
That's definitely Camus. That's 100%, 1,000% Camus.
I'm gonna, I'm going with Al on this one again.
Okay, okay. I'll see.
D, T, C.
Wait, is, okay, did everybody this far say C?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Move.
See, okay.
I'll go with C.
Oh, this might be like unanimous if you keep going, huh? Did Inga say C?
Al's conviction sold me.
Yep.
Well, hope, let's hopefully it's conviction and not a poker hand.
Uh, got me wrong on the first one, so.
Yeah, I still, I'm a little concerned about that.
All right, Sarah, general consensus. You know, next time, we will all have to do a poetry reading, so I am just prepping you. And Kelsey is withdrawing her. Don't worry, I'm not gonna make anybody draw anything.
Well, she still has to, officially, she has to pass her drug test. She's probably wondering right now, how did any of us?
Exactly.
I know, my kids could probably tell you that, but no. In my other job. Okay, are you ready? "Autumn is a second spring when every leaf is a flower," Albert Camus.
All right.
All right, all right, all right, so.
Right.
One more.
I know.
You don't all say the answer at once. "There is a harmony in autumn and a luster in its sky."
B.
Yeah, that's Shelley for sure.
Oh, with B. I guess, what, it's a lot of choices here.
Anybody want to phone a friend?
Old English.
Al, who should I vote for?
Okay.
Well, she could have a trick one in here, you know.
Right, it is. It is B, it is B.
Oh, cool.
No drama, no nothing. You guys did awesome, good job. So, um, you know, now you can go out and read poetry about the fall equinox. Cast some spells with the full moon, whatever it is you do to celebrate. All right, so, Brian? We got to bring it down enough, gotta bring it down.
First of all, Mark, is everything, um, right on there? Sections, everything else?
You can eliminate one of the Es after 1985. I think you're good.
Um, and you said, can we have a five-minute break?
Okay, I'll give you a three-minute break. Seven four, 7:42, be back in 7:42.
But after I read this.
Yeah, we can, no, okay.
Okay.
All right.
See you, Mark.
No, Mark, no. You're always welcome to stay while we talk in closed session and wait for us to come back, but it's not mandatory.
So, are we on a break right now?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I'm going to stop the recording then.
Wait for me to read it?
Correct.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, subsection 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses, business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding the City of Milton Fire and EMS service provisions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we'll move into closed session, and then anybody that's not on the council or involved with this would get put in the waiting room.
And the record may reflect that it's a unanimous vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to begin the process of, um, pursuing membership with the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
Second.
Anybody have any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Um, our next meeting is, um, October 5th, and, um, need a motion to adjourn pretty quick because my laptop's losing power.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you want to pose, all right, good work tonight.
Took care of sidewalk, sidewalk displays and the fire department. What else could, what else is there?
And brilliant team building, I mean.
Downhill from here.
Our, our sewer televising, so we're missing.
And potential future mansions on the sewer system. What a night.
You guys, you're awesome.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.